Welcome, everyone. And welcome to the City Council meeting for December, what's that, 19th? Yes, please stand and salute the flag.
All the members, Councilor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councilor Keith.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers is absent. Councilor Rizzo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Serino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Silvestri is absent. Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Visconti.
Here.
Here, Coram is present. Calendar item number two, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of December 12th.
So move.
Calendar item number three, motion presented by Councilor Rizzo that the City Council award a certificate of commendation to Arthur W. Fashi in recognition of his 95th birthday. Mr. Fashi is a 23-year veteran who served in World War II, Korean War, Vietnam, and the Lebanon crisis.
Councilor Rizzo. Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the City Council, those in attendance here tonight. Thanks so much for entertaining me for just a couple of minutes. I know we've got a few citations we're giving out tonight, but I'm very happy and proud to be giving out this one. Before I just state a couple of quick facts and make a couple of statements, I'd like to recognize Arthur Fashi's significant other, Dolly Moreno, who's here with us in the audience. Dolly, as some of us might know, was a 36-year employee of the City of Revere, both in auditing and the Election Commissioner's Office, and so happy to see her back here in City Hall again. And my longtime dear friend and assistant, Joyce DiNuccio, she's here along with her granddaughter, Brooke, so thank you guys for being here and helping make this possible and bringing Arthur Fashi up here so we can celebrate together his 95th birthday. What an amazing man, an amazing man. So 1927, that was the year Mr. Fashi was born, 1927. In fact, it was on, is it December, December 15th, 1927. Back then, gallon of milk was $0.60, loaf of bread was $0.10, average home cost about $4,000, rent was $35 to $40 a month, can't find that in Revere these days. Gasoline, $0.21 a gallon, average vehicle, $2,537, and the average weekly earnings around the country was about $30 a week. Amazing how much time has changed. But Arthur Fashi, between the years of 1927 and 2022, has contributed so much, not just to the City of Revere, but this entire country. As was stated earlier, his military service includes World War II, the Korean War, the Vietnam War, and the Lebanese Crisis. He participated in all of those honorably and with distinction. And he served our community at the Park and Recreation Department for 20 years. He's one of those guys, never misses a day. He is like clockwork. And he comes from that generation, the Greatest Generation. And they're not called the Greatest Generation for nothing. They really are truly the Greatest Generation who built this country so that those of us here, many of us here, could enjoy what we have today. So I just thought it would be appropriate, given my longtime friendship with Arthur, he's been such a tremendous source of support for me during my many years in politics. But beyond his support, he's become a friend, and I consider him a friend and an advisor. And with age, we all know, comes wisdom, and that's something that we know that Arthur has. So Arthur, on behalf of my colleagues here in the City Council, and presumably those of us here in attendance and who might be watching, I want to wish you the happiest of birthdays. Thank God and God bless. And so I will read... So we'll... You probably don't even need the glasses, do you, Arthur?
No.
You probably don't. So this is a certificate of commendation for you, Arthur. It states an acknowledgement of your milestone 95th birthday, which was celebrated on December 15, 2022. Special recognition is hereby accorded to Arthur W. Fashi. A legendary Navy veteran, you spent 23 years protecting and defending the citizens of the United States throughout World War II, the Korean War, the Vietnam War, and the Lebanon Crisis. The sacrifices that you have made and the bravery, courage, and patriotism that you've exhibited throughout your life will always be remembered. The City Council of the City of Revere offers its sincerest congratulations and sends its best wishes for continued health, happiness, and good fortune. And the certificate is presented by the entire City Council, the citizens of Revere, this 19th day of December in the year of our Lord 2022 and the Independence of the United States of America, the 246th. It's signed by our City Clerk, Ashley Melnick, and our City Council President, Jerry Visconti. So congratulations. Can we take a picture, do you think? Want to take a picture?
Next up is calendar item number four, motion presented by Councilors Morabito and Novoselsky that the City Council award certificates of appreciation to our singing seniors who bring holiday cheer throughout the city with their caroling.
So what an amazing group this is. I'm a big groupie already. I watched you guys practice on Revere TV, and I got to see you live in front of City Hall, Ira and myself. You know, the holidays, you know, can be very lonely for some people, and it'd be a very sad time of year. And the reason we're recognizing you tonight is because what you're doing is you're bringing holiday cheer, you're uplifting people's spirits throughout the city. And I just want you to know, when you become famous and you're on Broadway, just remember us. So if you guys want to come up here? Oh, I thought we were going to sing "Afterwoods" with the City Council. I guess not. You guys are just changing the plans. Okay, ready? On the count of three. One, two, three. And ladies, just to let you know, the rest of the council was going to sing, but we thought you were going to sing something easier, like "Frosty the Snowman" or "Jingle Bells." Well, we would have joined in. Okay, are you guys ready? Okay. City of Revere, Massachusetts, certificate of appreciation in acknowledgement and appreciation of bringing festive spirit, joy, and good cheer by caroling throughout this holiday season as a member of the singing seniors. Special recognition is hereby accorded to Karen Knapp.
Right here, right behind you.
There you go.
Denise.
Linda Darti.
Karen Webb.
Sandy Lager.
Eleanor Vieira.
Oh, Mary Vigliotta.
Nancy Markowitz.
Kathleen Brennan.
Marie Buck...
Lucretia Darren.
Jackie Loody.
Anne-Marie Druckus.
Josephine Piccari.
Last but not least, Mary Ann Iantosca. And I also want to thank the senior center, especially Deb Pesca, for organizing this. And she was there in support, Annie Anna as well. So do you guys want to say anything at all?
Thank you.
Well, we thank you, so...
I'm going to say something.
Here's Ira.
I just want to say, excuse me for my mask tonight, but I want to say that these ladies are unbelievable. Now, you notice they're wearing red and white, okay? That's for this festive season. Tomorrow night, they go backstage and they change their costumes. And they'll be singing tomorrow night in front of City Hall when we light the menorah. So they've been learning Hebrew songs for Hanukkah, and we look forward to hearing them then. Thank you.
All right, calendar item number five, motion presented by Councilor Keith that the City Council award a certificate of appreciation to Sergeant Joe Intenacola and the leadership at Mass Badge, who helped organize and execute Revere's annual community Thanksgiving. This year, the event served over 600 people and provided over 100 meals to go, all through charitable and in-kind donations from our community members.
Councilor Keith.
So usually, I don't like to surround myself with this many police officers. I'm just joking. I know. I'm always hesitant. But this is, this is, you know, somewhat long overdue, but I do want to just recognize a few special people that are in the room tonight as well. So the Mass Badge organization has been in association for about 25 years. I think they just celebrated their 25th anniversary this year at the Seaport Hotel. They had a wonderful gathering. President Raul Goncalves, Vice President, this gentleman, this smiley, beautiful face behind me, Joseph Intenacola, some of the leadership that's in this room tonight that we personally want to recognize. We didn't do individual citations for each person, but we wanted to really recognize the Mass Badge Association and thank them for being members and supporting offerings in Revere. I know that Everett and Revere are some of their strongholds when it comes to community participation. So Raul Goncalves, President Joseph Intenacola, Vice President Mark Cardosa, Jeff McCabe, Pedro Alves, Josella Rodriguez, and Olivia McCabe, Jeff's daughter, I assume, correct? Right? Not your wife, your daughter. And we just want to thank the Mass Badge Association for being part of our community, and we are appreciative of the support that you give to our residents. It's such a great representation, and it's very significant to many people. So I just wanted to touch base on that in regards to what they do. But just to talk about the Community Thanksgiving Event, there's a few people that are not here tonight, but they're really, they truly are the behind-the-scenes people that make it work. On top of the group that I just mentioned, and of course, Big Joe here, Patricia Shula and Patty Carey, who both work for the Revere Police Department and the REC Center. They are, I do a lot of the cooking, but they are the people that make it go. And I know that almost all of the councils in this room, and a lot of the community members go to this event, they carve every piece of meat. They start at noon. They start the night before setting up the room, and they carve every piece of meat, all the turkey, 89 turkeys, 40 hams. They cut each piece of that with just a few other helpers, so they really save the day for all of us. But the Mass Badge, over the last nine years in the City of Revere, has hosted and partnered with the city and its community members, and gotten offerings from businesses to help support this event, to host a community Thanksgiving dinner. The dinner itself is a feast, over 89 turkeys this year, 40 hams, mashed potatoes, vegetables, salad, dessert, cranberry, you name it, three buffet lines, two DJs, two large rooms. This is just the one that they do in Revere, never mind the one that they do in Everett. About 75 volunteers, T-shirts, they come in the night before, put the room together. We deliver over 50 meals, close to 100 meals got delivered throughout the community this year, which was really special. That's the easy part. The hard part is some of the work that you see someone like Joe, who does year-round, going around the community, you know, sometimes with his hat in his hand, asking for support to help this event, but not just this event, but other charitable events that Mass Badge sponsors. Joe goes up and down the streets of Broadway, all throughout the community, talks to all of us, and really gets a lot of special volunteers. He puts together the entire shopping list with his group in front of us, and gets around, and puts this entire organization together as a volunteer. He doesn't get paid to do this, this is not a paid, none of these positions here, people are getting paid. This is all because they want to do good for the community and showcase what Mass Badge means to being a community member. So that, to me, we all know how important the Revere Police Department, we all know how important our local first responders are to us, and I just wanted to make sure that these things that they do for our community doesn't go unnoticed. I'm so honored to have this gentleman and a few others, as I consider them, I don't just consider them my friend, they are my friends. So I'm so thankful to be able to present them with this certificate of appreciation tonight. And I want to say thank you very much to the leadership of Mass Badge for people like Joe, and people like Patricia, and people like Tish, and all of you wonderful people that are in front of us tonight. So if you can all come up, I have one for the entire group. And I'll read this one here. Certificate of appreciation in acknowledgement and appreciation for organizing and implementing Revere's ninth annual community Thanksgiving by serving over 600 folks and providing over 100 meals to go, all made possible through charitable and in-kind donation. This special recognition is accorded to Sergeant Joseph Intenacola. This is Raul, the President. If he'd accept these on behalf of Patricia Shula and Sergeant Patty Carey, and also this is for you to hang on your wall for the entire Mass Badge organization. Thank you, Raul.
Thank you.
All right? If you want to. Any comments, Joe? I know you're a man of many words.
I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Pat Keith. He is the one cooking the night before with us while we're setting up, and he cooked over, you know, 80-something turkeys that day. So he should be thanked as well as the wonderful businesses that donated to this event and made it possible every year. Thank you for all your support, and we'll see you again next year.
Calendar item number six, motion presented by Councilor Morabito that the City Council host this certificate presentation in the City Council chambers during the month of December to recognize the city employees that have retired this year.
Councilor Morabito? So I'm just going to say a few words, and then I'm going to have the City Clerk read off the certificates. This is our first recognition presentation by the City Council. How this came to fruition, I was thinking of ways of how we can show appreciation for those who are retiring in our city. And this presentation does that. It tells you how we feel as a City Council, how we appreciate your loyalty to the city all those years, and how we value you in that role that you played for the city and all that you've done in your, you know, throughout the years. And it's very important that not just department heads get recognized, but whether you're someone who's in the back and just filing away, you contribute to making the city successful as well as someone in the leadership role. So with that said, thank you on behalf of the City Council for all your years of service. It's greatly appreciated, and I think, and I want to, I can speak for me, but I'm sure my colleagues feel the same way. This is no BS presentation. We really appreciate your years of service with the city, and you should be acknowledged. Madam Clerk?
So the first one, in acknowledgement and recognition of extraordinary distinguished meritorious public service during your employment with the City of Revere, special recognition is hereby accorded to Dan McGuire, Elder Affairs. It is with great pleasure that the City Council of the City of Revere offers its sincerest congratulations and best wishes for a happy, enjoyable, and well-deserved retirement. All right, next retiree is...
As Madam Clerk reads the name, you can start making your way up here. And I just want to say that everyone who was retiring got the invitation. Some chose to have their certificates mailed to them, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Next up is Captain Robert Fortuna of the Fire Department. Angelo Vedora, Department of Public Works. Officer Jerry Silvati of the Police Department. Debbie Penta, Water and Sewer Department. Detective Daryl LaMonica of the Police Department. Detective Daryl LaMonica of the Police Department. Charlotte Ferranti, Retirement Board Office. Sergeant Joey Covino, Police Department. And last but not least, John Verengia, City Assessor.
And can I ask all my colleagues come up here for this picture since this is on, on behalf of all of us?
with an update on the reconfiguration of Bennington Street for the purpose of establishing bike lanes. It's recorded that Council Zambudo is recused from discussion on this matter.
Mr. President?
Counselor? If I could, and just to reflect back to the last order of business, because one of the retirees that was mentioned wasn't here, as were several others, but one I know in particular, John Verengia just went through some pretty significant surgery. He is home recovering and I just wanted to offer him our well wishes from the City Council in hopes that he fully and quickly recovers.
He's doing well.
Great.
Okay, name and address for the record?
Good evening. This is on? Okay. I tend to be loud, so if it gets a little too loud, I'll just move it away. I am Michael Trepanier. I am resident at 288 Summer Street in Boston, and that's the point, down in Eastie, for those familiar. I'm actually joined this evening by Taylor Dennerline from Tool Design Group. We're going to do a little bit of a half and half here. Taylor is a traffic engineer and our lead project manager from our consulting firm. I am a senior program manager at MastDOT tasked with implementation of a number of our various statewide capital programs. In this case, it's a couple of hats that I'm wearing for this project that was conceived as, that sort of kills two birds with one stone. I, I, I think it's, it's interesting because a lot of folks are seeing this, this project as a, as a bicycle lane project, but really what we're trying to do, our first and foremost priority here is to improve safety and reduce speeds on Bennington Street and using this stretch of the corridor as sort of a demonstration or pilot approach for how to reorganize Bennington Street and narrow down what is otherwise a really, really wide road while also simultaneously leveraging other improvements that are sort of in the works in both East Boston and Revere and, and beyond. So we're going to talk through those project goals, some of the existing conditions, which I think as Revere City Councilors and those others following online in the gallery, it's certainly, I know I'm not nearly the singing senior, but follow me tomorrow night at karaoke and I might not be half as bad. So we're going to talk through existing conditions, which again, it's nothing unfamiliar for this group. We're going to show you our draft plans and kind of talk through the data that we've collected in terms of traffic data, their volumes, the speeds that the vehicles are going, and what we plan to do in this sort of pilot phase to start to try and drive some of those speeds down while preserving as much of that regional, local vehicle throughput as, as, as can be achieved while rebalancing some of the roads' needs. And then we'll have, I'm sure, a very robust discussion with the, with the council. So this is not something Mastod's done in a, in a vacuum. We have been partnered with staff from the city of Revere, with members of, staff from much larger staff in the city of Boston and various departments there. TCR has been a stakeholder at the table as we've been sort of conceiving what could be done with this stretch of roadway. And of course, our consulting engineer, Tool Design Group. So as I said, our, our primary goal here is to reduce vehicle speeds and the potential for high severity crashes. As a resident in East Boston, I, for the last 10 years, I have seen too many stories about high-speed rollovers, crashes, fatalities that have occurred either on Bennington Street or on Route 1A. And, and that is definitely a symptom we see through the entire corridor. What we're going to address is a much smaller stretch than the entire length of Bennington Street, but in a really meaningful way. We're going to improve those multimodal connections, people destined from the Blue Line to the Belle Isle Marsh, people destined from the neighborhoods to the Beauchamp School, folks who are walking and or biking along the corridor, and making the entire corridor a bit more comfortable for everyone using it, including those in their cars. Simultaneously, we're, this is a very, very small step towards implementing some of the regional and local plans that have been conceived over the last decade or longer for, for this stretch of Bennington and trying to pull all those together in a, in a organized fashion. So I apologize, we're going to definitely make sure I've shared this presentation with, with your colleagues here and make sure, so that the council can have a better, better look at it and be able to, you know, share this after the fact, because I did not expect the screens to be quite this small. So bear with me as I try to describe what you're seeing on this screen. Ultimately, what this is, is a map showing up in the top left corner, the Constitution Beach facility and the DCR reservation there and the existing terminus of the Mary Ellen Welch or East Boston Greenway. Some of those proposed connections that you're seeing in dash lines, either over to Winthrop and crossing the Belle Isle Marsh adjacent to Saratoga Street, or continuing down from Orient Heights Square to the connection at Wally Street that's proposed by the Suffolk Downs Development, making that shared use path connection to Suffolk Downs. And ultimately, that other longer term sort of greenway that's envisioned along Bennington Street. We're talking, our study area is that small red box which runs from Leverett Street where the Napolais Restaurant is in front of, on one side of Bennington, and on the other is the Suffolk Downs Station. And then continuing down that, that straightaway stretch of Bennington Street to right up to the approach of the area known as Donnelly Square where Bennington State Road and Winter Pav all meet. But we're stopping short of that at Everard Street, right out, right out at the front door of the Beauchamp School, because we're tying into the improvements that HYM has proposed as part of their off-site mitigation for the Suffolk Downs Development. You can see also on the screen, we're, we're, the vision, envisioned improvements here from a multimodal bike pedestrian connectivity perspective is connecting East Boston to Revere and ultimately to Revere Beach, the boardwalk at Revere Beach, which would make even larger regional connections to Lynn and then using Northern Strand back from Lynn, back through Revere and Saugus, and all the way back to downtown Somerville, creating this really world-class off-road bicycling and walking network for, for these communities. Again, this is going to be the old hat part of our presentation, which is, you know, you all know Bennington Street, it's a very wide four-lane undivided road. We have sidewalks, if not in excellent condition, but sidewalks presence on, on both sides, parking in, in many of the stretches of the corridor that we're discussing and a speed limit that varies from 30 back down to 20 miles an hour, depending on whereabouts you are in the corridor. It's going to drive this point home and I invite Taylor up to, to talk through the design, because I think my voice gets a little dull after a couple of minutes. I'm not going to break out in a song, maybe I could convince Taylor to. But seeing that this, this data was collected with an automatic traffic recorder and we've collected additional traffic data at both of the intersections, but what this has told us is that, the bottom, the bottom line takeaway is that we've got about 10 and a half thousand vehicles moving down Bennington Street on a daily basis. This is data that we've confirmed both before, during, and after the pandemic. We get that question a lot when we're, when we're presenting internally. We've got actually multiple data points, both from the, our partners at HYM, data we collected during the pandemic and the data we collected subsequent there too. And, and this number, 10 and a half thousand, is, is right about where, where we're floating in all three of those data points. But what, what's really interesting, and I think that anyone who's experienced this corridor, you, you know, it is very comfortable to speed. And so we're seeing about 70, 75, 77% of those, those vehicles traveling down Bennington Street exceeding the speed limit and many of them being upwards of 40 to 45 miles an hour in an otherwise 20 to 30 mile per hour zone. That 20 mile per hour zone is down around the school, it's a school zone speed limit and we're seeing speeds quite, quite in excess of that. Again, just to drive this point home, what we, what we have out striped out on the corridor in terms of pavement markings is two 10 and a half travel lanes in each direction with a nine-foot shoulder or parking lane. Sometimes that parking lane is not as well-defined on the Marsh side as it is on, on the Blue Line side and really, really wide grass buffers and sidewalks. And I, and I point this out because I think this, there's a misunderstanding that what we're doing here is to, our primary motivation is to accommodate bikes. What this graphic really does really well is to show that we actually have a lot of room in this corridor that if we did, if we did, if we felt like regional vehicular capacity was sacrosanct and preserving, we could have done that without actually taking a travel lane and reorganizing the corridor. But again, with that safety purpose in mind, first and foremost, the, the design sort of susses out as, as Taylor will show. The last, I'm going to just take this last slide. What we experience out there in terms of the operations at both Leverett and Everard, the two signals on either end of our, our project area, is that pretty much no one's really waiting behind those signals. Those are effectively pedestrian signals and they're not really there to control traffic the way you would say at Donnelly Square or Orient Heights Square. It's really just traffic stops when someone pushes a button, they clear, then, then we go back to a pretty much continuous green. So the average delay during peak hours, this isn't even during most of the day, but I can't imagine it could do any better than this, is five seconds. And you're really getting no queuing of vehicles, it's one car queuing up on the Leverett side, on the Everard Street side here in, in Revere. That average delay is still very, very low. Cars queue up, light turns green, they clear. So pretty incredible operations given in the urban context. All right, I'll, I'll pause here. Actually, okay, I'll take it, I'll take it. Just, just stay with me though, I need my, my security blanket. So what we're proposing is to ultimately repurpose one of those travel lanes in each direction and convert that into a painted buffered median. So we're pulling those high-speed vehicles apart and we introduce what we call in the business sort of side friction for narrowing those lanes. We're, we're still allowing for 11-foot travel lanes in each direction, an 11-foot painted buffer, no physical barrier, all that pavement stays effectively right where it is and these changes are being implemented, as I said before, in a more pilot basis to sort of test what happens with Bennington Street when we reallocate this, this space. And as part of that, again, providing a, a vertical sort of separation for a two-way separated bike lane that has a five-foot buffer, a flex post and quick curb, the kind of plastic intervention that's easy to deploy, easy to, to remove, that would separate out a 14-foot two-way separated bike lane or protected bike lane and then effectively leaving everything behind the curb line as it is. The graphic, grass buffers stay as they are and the sidewalks stay as they are. So this is over on the East Boston side, I'll kind of just walk you guys through from the East Boston side at Suffolk Downs, working east towards, towards Revere and the Beauchamp School and at Beauchamp Station. So ultimately, this is the western, southern, southwestern most, East Boston most bound side of our project area where we introduce the changes at the Leverett Street signal and allow for vehicles who are taking that right or through movement, very, very, very few vehicles are taking a right on the Leverett Ave, it's like, you know, on the order of five, 10 an hour. It's a very short little street that is, is not exactly heavy volume. And we're, we're allowing for, you see this green pavement marking, we're not going to be marking the street that green, that's really just for the sake of demonstrating that here on, on a plan. But we allow for bicyclists to be able to move in eastbound, Revere bound, in that two-way separated bike lane. And you see the sort of crossing for, for bicycles that have been headed east Boston bound to be able to safely cross and take advantage of, of the signal to get back into their own, the, the correct same direction as traffic and then ultimately get back into mixed use as they're approaching the Blue Line Bridge and, and Wally Street and ultimately Orient Heights. So as we move down the corridor, this starts to show the kinds of things that is more typical of, of the, the longer stretch where we have the medianized, or the painted median, we've allowed for left turn, turning movements into the Belle Isle Marsh driveway. So we have a very small little short left turn bay there. You're seeing in the middle of the screen, some green paint for cyclists using to separate the two-way bike lane to sort of signal to them, hey, cars could be coming in here, watch out. And then you see the, the buffer that's gored off with space reserved for parking. Ultimately, we think that if, if and when this parking becomes a higher demand with the introduction of Suffolk Downs and other pressures on the neighborhood supply, this could really both do two things, it could help protect the cyclists who are using it, but even more so, really create that more friction-like environment for drivers, not necessarily to get in their way, but to give them a little more sense of caution and to drive speeds closer towards the speed limit. Down at Everard Street, so at, at the Belle Isle driveway, you see there's one lane in each direction ultimately for general purpose and the center travel, the center left turn lane. That transitions as we get back to Everard Street and we, we needed that additional space of two lanes headed eastbound so that the, the signal at Everard Street could process the queues at effectively, in, in terms of traffic engineering metrics, effectively the same, similar level of service as we call it, but you know, minimizing the amount of delay that vehicles moving through that signal would experience heading Boston bound. Heading Revere bound, we're still one lane in each direct, in that direction, right alongside that buffered bike lane. But as we approach Donnelly Square, and this is really hard to see, I think, from the monitors, just making sure I'm gut checking myself, because it's pretty easy from here, what we're doing is ultimately tying into those improvements, as I mentioned earlier, that HYM have proposed, that's Donnelly Square right off to the right, where you, we open back up into two lanes, one through right and one left. And that's based on a lot of engineering and decisions that were, have happened well outside of our, our projects and, and we're just trying to tie in. They also have separated bike lanes that are actually physically separated at curb level that make this connection across with Donnelly Square, get up diagonally across Winthrop, at Winthrop Street and then connect to, to State Road. So that grayed out area, part of the reason it's grayed out is because we've just kind of drawn in the plans that we've received from Suffolk Downs Consulting Engineer on, on that. And one of the, one of the things that I think is really interesting about this is, you know, the difficulty coming out of the Beauchamp neighborhood and trying to get across, I've made this move myself many times in, in coming back from the beach or going from, from a Winthrop Shore Drive, trying to make that left on the Bennington Street heading towards Boston is, is really difficult because you're fighting against two lanes in, in the, you know, in the, in, in the traffic coming at you and then two lanes coming from Donnelly Square. In this, in this scenario, you're only going to have to get across that one, one opposing vehicle and then be able to get into the, make that left turn against, again, two lanes. vehicle and then be able to get into the, make that left turn against, again, two lanes there, but sort of minimizing that cross-section you have to get across as a driver. It really should improve that overall experience for folks trying to leave the neighborhood there. One of the things we heard from the Friends of the Belle Isle Marsh was a bit surprising to us. We met with them at the, per the recommendation of, of staff from the city here to kind of get some preliminary feedback on, on literally just the concept that we were proposing, cross-section we were proposing, and we got a lot of pushback about the needs for the parking on Bennington, because ultimately our first design eliminated it on the, on the marsh side of Bennington Street. We were able to reconfigure some of that, and, and you saw this in the design earlier, where we have parking that's now sort of protected by the bike lane and its buffer, and preserves a lot of that capacity that's needed at the marsh for special events. Apparently, they tag marsh swallows and it attracts a great deal of, of visitors. And, and that the only, the only stretch of parking that we're eliminating is, is that one spot where you don't see a red stripe, where there's really no demand for it. There's the N B T A parking lot at Suffolk Downs, there's no real residential use. We've got all the parking in front of the Park Place Apartments, and then even leading up into, to the Beauchamp Station and on the, the stretch between Everard and Crescent Ave. So this felt like a really good balance, and, and, you know, led to some really great feedback from, from that group. Finally, the, what happens to traffic has been a big question that we've asked ourselves, and we are hearing from, from certain community members and your state representatives, which, you know, we've looked at very closely. And this was some really good feedback, because frankly, we had originally looked at this project as something we were gonna do in a quick-build fashion, something that could be undone, just is actually quite a bit more easily than trying to implement the changes. We could revert quite, quite a bit more easily. So we looked at what happens in the build year, which, when we really got started on this road, we thought was going to be in 2022. We were dead wrong. We're still in our preliminary design phase. We haven't gotten to the point where we would even hold what we typically refer to as our formal twenty-five percent design public hearing. We probably won't be going through that level of formality, but we definitely expect the need to do additional outreach. Ultimately, what we're finding is that we're tripling from five seconds to fifteen seconds. Now, three hundred percent sounds like a lot, but when you consider that pretty much every intersection on both sides of, of this corridor, at Donnelly Square and at Orient Heights, are, they're experiencing levels of service that would get a letter grade of D or F. So what this is really doing is just creating a lot, a lot of free flow, and drivers finally get cleared from that congestion, those bottlenecks, and then get really frustrated when they get back to another queue and experience a great deal more delay. So while we're able to try and drive speeds down and minimize the, that potential for really serious and fatal injury, we're rebalancing some of that with, you know, shorter pedestrian crossings, better accessibility for the N B T A, better accessibility for the D C R's Belle Isle Marsh, and providing those, that the first step towards a regional network for, for cyclists. Ultimately, those delays at Everard Street, as I talked about earlier, they were about five seconds, and now we're at nine or eight, so, you know, quite a bit, you, you know, here within Revere, that, that impact is really, really minimal. And a lot of that came from changes that, from, from our own internal traffic engineers who said, you know, that's, that's not good enough, you know, you've gotta really do better, and that's where we revised the design, added the additional lanes, back, leaving Everard, heading, heading towards Boston. And you see that queue length, that average queue, the number of cars stacking up at about two hundred feet, but the delay is only nine seconds. So that's, that's about as much as cars add up during one red light and then clear in that next green. I'm looking for, thank you, I was looking for a nod. The, oh, excellent, excellent. The other major point that I think we were missing, and your state rep, Jess Janino, and, and, and neighbors out, out to the sea, Jeff Turco, gave us, you know, some really good feedback on this. We met with them about two weeks ago, and they had a lot of concerns and said, well, you know, we get that you think you're doing this in the short term, what happens if it never goes away? Suffolk Downs is a really big development that obviously all of us have been talking about for a long time. What happens when you add the volume that's anticipated to be generated by this, you know, new city? What we found was actually a bit surprising to me is that, yes, traffic is anticipated to increase along Bennington Street, and what you're seeing here, barely seeing here, are traffic diagrams, which show that in the A M, we're adding about four hundred vehicles in the southbound, which I'm guessing is East Boston-bound direction, and about fifty in the Revere-bound direction. In the P M, that number is, is a bit more balanced with two hundred and fifty-five new vehicles headed towards Orient Heights and two hundred and forty headed towards, towards Revere Beach or Revere Beach Parkway. Those numbers, frankly, I, I expected them to be quite a bit higher. We hadn't looked at them, and, and that was, you know, sort of a, a misstep on our side. But what happens when we add those numbers to the, to those anticipated operations, even in 2040, is that we still are not experiencing significant delay at, at either of these signals. The queue can, could, is anticipated to increase a bit. The way we've measured it, there's about four hundred and fifty feet of space for us to queue between Everard back to Donnelly Square, so we're still not exceeding that, and we're still clearing in just about a cycle or, worst case, you know, barely, barely a cycle and a half. But, you know, I think these are actually very conservative in terms of like a worst-case scenario for traffic operations during the peak hour in 2040. So that anticipates a full build-out of the Suffolk Downs development. And again, you're, you're not, you're experiencing far worse operations just a couple hundred feet over Winthrop Ave, where, you know, the, the situation is a lot more complex and a little more difficult to balance the various, you know, movements and, and demand from each of those legs of that intersection. So here we are, working to engage the community, and I think that, you know, I want to just address this. We are in our preliminary design phase, where typically we would not have done a great deal of formal outreach, and I think that our informal outreach to a couple of community groups in some ways was successful, in some ways was not, and definitely are, are here to begin a dialogue, not, 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 not end it. But to begin a dialogue about what we're proposing and how we can, you know, have, have a conversation with, with this body and, and get some feedback both from you individually and directly on the project, what we're proposing, but also guidance on how better to engage the community. I'll, I'll acknowledge, you know, I was, I was giving Councilor McKenna's name over the spring and reached out, and we spoke in, in, in early summer. And it takes time for these things to sink in, I think, for community members to hear about what we're proposing, and, you know, in a, on a nice summer afternoon, it's, oh, whatever, you know, we, we're not concerned about that, because we've gotten a lot of that sort of feedback from other places. And I'm like, wait, really? You're not? And, and then we kind of come back and we go, okay, let's, let's, let's take a harder look. We heard a lot from Representative Turco that, you know, winter could be really implicated here. So we are going and meeting with them during their second session of town council in January. City of Boston, I think, is a much larger sort of nut to crack, and we've been working with staff there and taking their direction, and, and we will, you know, do what's necessary to make sure that the, the, the impacts and benefits of the project we're proposing are, are clearly understood by all of, all of the communities that, that have that potential for direct, in the case of, of Revere, or indirect, in, in the case of Winthrop, benefits or impacts. And, and after we've done this, which, you know, i- if things go according to plan, we would, we would be restriping the road and resurfacing Bennington Street, the stretch of road that is under MassDOT jurisdiction. So you know where, you know right where the city line is, because Boston repaved right up to it, and our side of that line is not in such great repair. So we're proposing, in order for us to even make the pavement markings work, we have to resurface that stretcher road, and then we'll have a nice clean surface so that we can lay down those new pavement markings and reorganize those travel patterns. Once we've done that, we're gonna continue to assess how it's going. We're gonna, we're gonna be out there monitoring, we're gonna be collecting data from, you know, mobile connected vehicle sources. We have a great deal of big data at our disposal, but we are also gonna have boots on the ground, watching how this is going and getting feedback and surveying the community in lieu of, you know, all the other things that are happening at Donnelly Square and beyond. So with that, I will just sort of end my presentation, and I think, for now, I'll, I'll just leave it there. And I'll, I'll, that's my presentation, and feel free to stay with us.
Thank you and for the presentation. What I'd like to do is open it up to the council, but it's Councilor McKenna's words, so we'll start off with Councilor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a bunch of questions. So the first thing I have a problem with, that, yes, you did sit with me, and I don't think I said, oh, okay, whatever you want to do. I don't think it was really, I sat in stone at that time. I think you were planning it. My biggest problem is that Revere and Winthrop have not had public meetings about this, so people are calling me left and right and asking me, what's going on? What's going on? We're hearing this, we're hearing that, we're hearing this. And I don't know how to answer them. I'm just starting to ta- get a grasp on what's going on. I don't even think Rep. Turco knew what was going on, and it will affect Winthrop. It, it will affect Beauchamp, and that's my biggest concern with Beauchamp. I think taking two lanes coming into Beauchamp is good, it's gonna paralyze Beauchamp. I also think that going out of Beauchamp, that's an evacuation route, and if anything does tragically happen in Beauchamp, we're gonna be, it's gonna be, we're gonna be paralyzed. I do think there are other ways that you can put a bike lane. There's a wonderful piece of grass there. I don't think you should take any parking spaces away from anybody, because I don't know if you know, but Bennington Street is now putting up, I, I think it's forty or fifty units on, on the other side of going towards Boston. And I know those residents count on, because there's not enough parking spaces, because when they were built, parking wasn't a big issue back then. So I think these residents park, they, I have permanent parking for them, permanent parking, and they do park on the, on the street. So I think that's, that's a problem. That's gonna be a problem. I think just the transparency, I think that we just need to have public meetings so people will know what you want, what you're planning on doing. Your conversation with, your conversation and my conversation that I've been having for six years with Tom O'Brien is a little bit different. They're making, I don't know if you guys know this, but they're making, they're extending the Meridian Strip in Beauchamp, because it's a big, big problem. It's probably the biggest problem there, because people are coming in and out of Dunkin' Donuts and causing havoc. So they are going to extend the Meridian Strip, and people are going to have to take that left onto Everard Ave to go around if they want, because they can't make, they won't be able to make a U-turn. So I don't know if you are talking to him, but you should be talking to him, because there's a lot of changes going on. They're, they're going to queue the lights, because that is the biggest problem down in Beauchamp School, is that you can't, the cars just flow, 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 and there's no, there's no stop light, so people can't get out of Crescent Ave, so people are stuck there. I, I, so there are a lot of things, I think if you, I live, I've lived there all my life. I could tell you, I sat with Bob O'Brien for five hours, we watched the traffic, and he could tell you, well, he's in Delaware, but he could tell you the problems. I know the problems. I lived there. I've, I do it every single day. This is not the answer, I'm sorry. This is not the answer to take two lanes of traffic. You know, my colleague, Mr. colleague, Counselor Cogliandro, just put a speed bump on Cummings Ave, made the world a difference. You have, if you want to slow down the traffic, get the police involved and start radiring. You know, I mean, that's a simple answer. I understand that people want to be green, but, you know, and we're, we're trying to get onto the bikes and to the, the buses and everything, but in some places, it's, you can't do it. You just can't do it. You're gonna paralyze Beauchamp, you're gonna paralyze that whole section, you're gonna paralyze it. So I think you need, guys need to come up with a better, a better, you know, a bike, bike, and a bike lane is just not an answer. You have six months of winter and six months of, of, of spring and, and summer, you know? So you have a six months of, of bike lane, and it's gonna paralyze? You just told me that there's ten thousand, six hundred and thirty cars that come through there. When you put a bike, one, one lane, what's gonna happen to the traffic? It's gonna be crazy. It's gonna, it's gonna go all the way to Orient Heights or more. They just, they did Ocean Ave, okay, and put twenty-five-foot sidewalks there. They have two lanes. They got rid of an exit in Beauchamp and exit in Winthrop. Right now, if you start to see, the traffic is backed, backed up all the way past.
The Center Lakes.
Excuse me? Shirley Ave. I mean, it is, people, it's, you put bump outs, you can't get into Beauchamp, we put a bump out there, you can't get into Beauchamp if the, if the traffic is backed up in the middle lane. You guys, I mean, I understand bike lanes, I understand green, I'm, I'm an environmentalist. I care about the, the earth, but, you know, in some places, it just doesn't work. So I just did, I got a, an email from a resident, and he said, this, they're finding, they're finding, if you read, you know, some of the studies, they're finding that these bike lanes are not working. And also, you have Google Map, you have Waze, all these cars, they'll tell you, well, there's a big backup on Bennington Street, so let's go through wherever. So all these cars are gonna be rerouted all around in the neighborhoods and everything. It's, I'm telling you, there's a lot of stuff here. And, and, and your pilot program, okay? How long is that? If you do a pilot program, how long is that gonna be? Three months, six months, a year? Can you answer that for me?
Sure, I was wait, I was waiting.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I mean, I guess the pilot would be, is, is really, it's the evaluation. So it's, it's permanent when the sort of level of impact that, that you're describing does, does or doesn't, does or doesn't materialize. If it doesn't, we leave the condition as we proposed it.
Well, I know.
If it does, then we would revert or reorganize what we've proposed and be responsive.
Is there, let me just ask you a question. Is there a place in Boston or in Massachusetts that you were supposed to do a pilot program and it, you never, you never, and it didn't work and, and it's still there? I'm just asking. I, I, I don't know. I don't know the answer.
Well, yeah, actually, yes, very recently, my team worked with our, the same district, District Four, they're out of Arlington, and actually Taylor was on this team as well. We have, by the way, we are very adept at doing traffic analysis. We are the Department of Transportation. This is not something we've made up on a whim. Ten thousand vehicles a day is actually, for a facility this large, considered pretty low. According to federal guidance, we refer to this as a, a road diet approach. Federal guidance says that between, at ten thousand vehicles, it's a no-brainer. At ten to fifteen, you might need to take a, a look at it. Fifteen to twenty, maybe, twenty to twenty-five, you gotta take a real deep, deep dive. So at ten thousand, we've already done a great deal, I'm sorry, councilors, I've had my back to you this whole time. We've, we've done a great deal of, 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 of study. In, in many jurisdictions, they say, see that number and go, it'll work. So we've taken quite a number of steps, and we don't believe that, that the impact, as I was showing in my presentation, we don't believe that the impact is going to be really even noticeable to, to drivers, given what, what's on either end. Like I say, the operations at Donnelly Square, the operations at Orient Heights, I don't, I don't see how it's, they're, for the most part, what we're, what we're changing is that anyone riding a bicycle is going to be able, is, is going to switch these signals to red. to red. And ultimately, other than when those are, those are present, all the other benefits that we're realizing by narrowing the corridor down outweigh the few, the few times that that happens. And, you know, again, if it, if it starts to happen and we have, I don't know, 1,000 bicyclists show up, or 500 people getting off the train and crossing the street, that would significantly degrade operations over what we've anticipated. And that's why we commit to that, the longer-term monitoring. In terms of failed projects, yeah, it's happened and it's happened very recently. But the number of times it's happened is quite slim compared to the number of times we succeeded because we do take our time, we engage in a great deal of technical, technical analysis. We just took a lane out of the Mass Ave Bridge, spanning Boston, Cambridge over the Charles River. That we did with a pilot for the pilot. I, I don't think that anyone would call this phased pilot, but we've restriped the bridge and it now has one lane in each direction and buffered bike lanes. To pilot that, we used cones. We don't think that that's something that's actually viable here and, and that's why we're sort of piloting with paint. But also, it's, it's a great deal more volume crossing the Charles River and is not quite as, it's, it's not a no-brainer, according to our very technical metric there. But, you know, we're going to, we're going to look at it. So the, we, we had a project up in 114 in PBD in Danvers where we had excess, we had three lanes in each direction in, in some cases. And that third lane was based on crash data, showing us a great deal of friction with driveways, people exiting from curb cuts and other local side streets and people jockeying for position. And we looked at the traffic and we evaluated and we said, this is, this is easy. This should be really simple. And we did it and we were dead wrong in, in, in certain parts of that corridor. In certain other parts, the perception of impact has been very different than, than, than what our data is telling us. But we're very deeply involved in managing, watching, watching cameras, we've installed cameras, we're watching video, we're monitoring big data sources that can show us how thousands of vehicles are experiencing that travel time, not just, you know, the anecdote of, well, this used to be really easy and now it's difficult for me. Those sorts of things, everyone's personal experience is, is, is their experience. The data that we use to, to supplement and, and to inform our analyses is very, very robust.
We've also already made changes to that project as well, based off of feedback.
Oh, yeah, thanks. That was what I meant to say and we reverted some of those changes because in, in the places where we were wrong, we were wrong.
Right.
And we acknowledged that and we, we reverted back.
I want to give my other colleagues a, a chance to talk, but I just wanted to say, I don't know, yesterday was, it wasn't yesterday, the day before yesterday, I, I went to Somerville and they had, their bike lane was the roadway, you know? And it didn't seem to bother anybody, so I just, I'm going to give my other colleagues a chance to talk. Thank you.
And my apologies, I tend to be a little bit.
No worries. We're going to start off with Counselor Rizzo, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just, just very, very briefly, at what stage is this in now? Nothing's imminent right now in terms of changing anything on Bennington Street, correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. You're not even in 25% design phase yet, right?
We, we've completed the internal review, Mastod's sort of formal step of a, and with something like this, where we're talking about less heavy construction, we tend to call it preliminary and final rather than 25, 7, 500 in, in some of the work that, you know, if you've experienced our more federalized tip process, we have four or five submissions. In this case, we'll probably have three. So we're calling this our, our draft preliminary design. And it has just completed its review internal to Mastod. We're going through what we call comment resolution where Taylor's team submitted the design, our people commented on it. Taylor's team is acknowledging those comments, trying to address them. We've had a conversation about things we needed to discuss, like.
Okay, so basically, you've already, you've already had your beginning stage, correct?
We're at our, we're at our first stage.
Okay, so I, I just have a couple of quick questions I just want to ask. So I know you counted the cars so far, which you said is a little over 10,500, 10,600, I think was what it was on the screen. Have you done it, have you counted the bikes that use the street as well? Have you counted the bicycles? Do we know how many bicycles use it?
We, we did, yeah.
So and how many bicycles an hour, for example, would use the street?
Currently, very few. And most are on the sidewalk currently.
Okay.
Do we have a number?
Not offhand, but maybe five an hour.
Five an hour? Okay, and.
Right, which a corridor like that, you would expect to really discourage on-road use.
But, I mean, I'm just wondering why you, all these resources are being utilized for five bicycles an hour? Like, I'm just going to give you an example, this is just an anecdote. I went over the Tobin Bridge today. I don't know if anyone's had the chance to go over the Tobin Bridge. They took a whole lane of traffic. So now what's hap, you know, and that's for buses, it has nothing to do with bicycles.
Right, that's our Bus on Shoulder initiative, yeah, that's correct.
For buses. So we're stacked up all the way into Chelsea, going over the bridge because we lost a lane of traffic. A bus didn't pass me the whole time that I was headed there. We've got bus lanes on Broadway. I see buses go down, no one's on them, truthfully. No one's on the bus. But yet they're taking lanes of traffic in front of businesses. This is your job and, and look, I am all for something that's going to make the quality of life for the majority of people better. But I feel like so many projects are done that are for not the majority of people, the majority of people, at least in this part of the country, aren't getting to work by bike. They're, they're, you know, and even as much as we in Revere have three train stops, we've got a wide array of public transportation options, that they're doing some things right now that are going to negatively impact some of our population, but that's another story, really, nothing to do with your project. I mean, you're talking 10,600 daily trips. At full buildout, Suffolk Downs, by their own numbers, this isn't my numbers, by their own plan is going to have 30,000 additional vehicle trips a day. I'm sorry, 35,000. 35,000 additional vehicle trips a day. I don't know how many are going to use Bennington Street. But, you know, there's nothing worse, and I don't know if you drive or if you, you bicycle, whatever people's preferences are, I'm all good with. But if you're some, if you're somebody that typically gets back and forth and where you need to go by car, how frustrating. I mean, you can't measure road rage, right? I mean, you know, think about people that need to get to work. Think about people that need to get home because the babysitter's there and they need to pick up their kids or, you know, these are all real-life issues that we have to deal with. I mean, I'd love to have beautiful, if we lived in a, in an area where, you know, sunny 364 days out of the year and there's, you know, plenty of space, but we don't. We're, we're in an old community that these roads were built long before we knew we were going to have tens of thousands of cars driving on them. And you have to understand, when we start to hear plans about you're going to take another lane of traffic away or shorten up, for, you know, it, it puts that, it puts immediate stress on people because a lot of people don't have the luxury of just kind of, you know, taking a, you know, a casual ride. And again, I'm not putting down people, I'm not, this isn't, I, I mean, you know, I, I wish it could accommodate everybody, but I, I'm just very fearful that down the road, and I'm talking about Suffolk Downs buildout as well, I mean, that's a long-term. I believe the mission and the motives that, you know, that the DOT has are pure. I, I think that, you know, you really want to make a positive difference. But I'm just very concerned from a practical standpoint, how this is going to help our people in this city move around. So that's all I have, Mr. President. I know you're still in the initial phases. I just wanted to weigh in. You were nice enough to appear here tonight.
Absolutely.
I have to give you my two cents.
That is my job, you're correct, Counselor. That is my job.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for being here tonight. Very similar, couple, not really any questions, I think Counsel Rizzo and McKenna asked a lot that I had questions on. I think, I think bike lanes are very good to have and I think a community like ours this close to the city, in, in some of the buildings that we've, we've had with people that don't want to have traditional modes of transportation, they are important. I do, however, I kind of balk when you start reducing lanes, especially on some of these major throughways. I, I mean, I don't know the safety data, so I would just say that maybe in the planning stages, if there's ways to carve out space for bike lanes without losing, you know, entire lanes, you know? You mentioned it, there, there are four wide lanes. So if there's ways to maybe shorten them up so you can still get the amount of vehicles because when H Y M does come up in, in, you know, five, seven years from now, when you're starting to see it more, more built up, you know, I can only imagine you're going to see those trips, those ships are going to go up. I don't know where the fatality data is coming from. I, I can only say that you, you look at 1A, you look at, you know, Bennington Street, you look at any, any major roadway, the Parkway, a lot of these fatalities are happening at night. They're happening at 1, 2, 12:00 in the morning. So really, the, the relevance of the, the lanes kind of isn't, isn't, certainly it matters, but people are speeding when the, the roads are wide open at that time of night, whether it's a two-lane highway or a four-lane highway. So that's ten, that tends to be when you see those major fatalities with rollovers, et cetera. I do have a couple, and I just, again, I drive around the city, I drive into Boston every single day. Of course, I have the same frustration Counsel Rizzo mentioned on that bus lane on the, on the Tobin Bridge. It was absolutely the, the worst decision. But, you know, I come from Government Center, coming out of Boston, and they took a bike lane, they took a lane of road going, if you have City Hall Plaza on the right. I had an emergency vehicle behind me and it couldn't get past us because it was a protected bike lane and there was a bike lane, there was a, there was one lane coming this way on City Hall Plaza and one lane going in the opposite direction. And the, the emergency vehicles, because you only had two lanes and they had the protected bike lanes, which I get, you know, you don't want to get clipped if you're a bicyclist. But I don't know if that was factored in. You know, the cones you talked about, they were throwing them over, you know?
Yes, that was regrettable.
I was going to suggest cones, but they were throwing them over the bridge on the Mass Ave Bridge, you know, you see all these things that happen. You know, leaving the North End, so sometimes I'll cut through Atlantic Ave. When I used to leave Boston, cut through the North End and get onto the Charlestown Bridge, it was always a smooth ride. Or, you know, you got some traditional four, five, six o'clock traffic. Now that they added the bike lane and they took, they added a bus lane on the Main Street area, I can't, it takes me 45 minutes if I get stuck in that traffic. So it has impacted my life, not always to the positive, but is there a way to carve out some bike, safe bike lanes without reducing what the major traffic patterns are and that's for vehicles? That would be something I would, I would love to see, a good compromise. And again, it's very early, but, you know, especially with the amount of vehicles that are coming in out of Beachmont in the, in the next coming years. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Would you like me to respond?
Sure.
Well, I, I guess, I, I'm going to sound a little bit like a broker record here, but this is a very different context than a place like downtown Boston where those roadways are experiencing much, much more significant volume, daily volume and much more significant peak hour volumes as well. And in a much more tightly condensed network of signals and highway, local road interaction. That is not the case here in, in this stretch of Bennington Street. And frankly, if, if we, if we did think that the, the volumes were significant, like, this is not even Broadway. You know, Broadway is a very different situation and I, as, as, as much as I knew about the bus on shoulder, I, I, I'm not going to speak to it because I don't know the data. But I do know that, you know, we, we take a hard look at these things and I think that if, if I was standing here and that, that volume was 30,000 a day on Bennington Street, which you'd need five Suffolk Downs potentially to, to create that much, to generate that much volume. And as, as we noted, there was, you know, 400 at, at its most, the largest buildout, full programmatic buildout of Suffolk Downs, we still only see an additional 400 in the peak hour, which so over the course of an entire day, you know, does add thousands of trips during the peak hour when that has the potential to have the most impact. That's what we've analyzed and still do not believe that it's really going to be as impactful as a place like, frankly, like North Washington Street where the bus lane was, was introduced. And yeah, that was a big, that, that was a much different decision by the city of Boston to introduce a bus lane, to make that connection from the Charlestown Bridge over to Haymarket and just sort of saying, look, this is our priority, we want to get, move buses. That is not the decision that we're making here. This is not about bus, bike lanes versus vehicle travel. Part of the reason why we've been able to achieve the, the road diet, as we, as we call it, is because we don't believe that we need that extra lane and that if we were to build Bennington Street today, we wouldn't put four lanes, we wouldn't put two lanes in each direction. And we, and we probably wouldn't even design it the way we are. This is just, this is the way that we can do it that's simple and frankly, easier to, to revert if, if, if we are dead wrong. But I do think that there's, there's, you know, there's a lot to be said about context and that the, all the, all the other intersections from Elliott Circle up Ocean Ave to Shirley Street and, and all the way over to the Parkway and Everett and Wellington, those are very different. Those are very, very different contexts in that we don't see the same kind of potential for that level of impact here on Bennington.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you very much for your presentation tonight. This is a little off the topic, but you mentioned that your, this project is about safety. So I have a question for you. Is there anything that you guys are planning on doing for Bell Circle in Revere and Brown Circle?
I, I actually do believe, I'm not involved in it, Counselor, but I do believe that there is, there may be a retrofit for Bell. I don't want to speak out of turn because I'm not exactly sure. I can't look at you for an answer.
Be careful, there's a big deal, Bell Circles.
No, I'm, I honestly, I, I'm not sure. I know that, I know that as part of our safety program and other, we do, we have done retrofits of larger rotaries and tried to retrofit them with pavement markings to behave more like what we refer to as a modern roundabout, which, without actually physically changing the radius. I, I'm going to have to look into that because I, I, I am not sure. But I know that we do have a circle in Revere that we're working on and, and I, I don't know the details.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me. I, I attended a transportation bond bill hearing about two years ago. And the, the main topic that the governor introduced at that time was getting traffic off of our roadways into public transportation. And I think before we go ahead putting all of these bike lanes, like we have them on Broadway Revere, we have them on Revere Street, it's a two-lane highway, one going, one coming on Revere Street, they're bike lanes. I mean, we're just opening the door for fatalities and, and serious accidents with these bike lanes, okay? I think, one, before we go into bike lanes, we need to get traffic off of our highways. And the only way you do that is through public transportation. It's impossible to do otherwise, okay? And I, I know that there's a, there's money in the transportation bond bill to extend the commuter rail line, so it includes a, not extended, just add on a station at Wonderland to get traffic off of 1A, get those people using the commuter line to get to that point at Wonderland. They may be going to Boston, the airport, the crossover, I mean, the closed bridge, and they go right into the Blue Line and go further into the Financial District or the airport. And I think these are the things, in my opinion, that needs to be, they need to be addressed before we start talking about bike lanes. Bike lanes may in some way get a car or two off of the, the roadway, but they don't do the job that's necessary to get traffic reduced, not only in the city of Revere, but all throughout the Commonwealth. So I think this is something we should be looking at more than a bike lanes, getting, getting traffic off of our highways. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, and I would, I would wholeheartedly agree that a transportation solution, there is no, there is no silver bullet and that regional traffic could be very well abated by better commuter rail options or additional, you know, Blue Line options for users that are using Bennington for 1A and even the Parkway. What we're trying to do with this project is, is the first step towards that larger network of facilities that would allow and that would facilitate that share of traffic, maybe not 365 days a year, but a great portion of the year where people could feel comfortable and safe riding their bikes or making connections to transit, to, to buses, to, you know, wherever they're going. This isn't about trying to relieve the congestion on 1A. I know, I know our project doesn't do that. But what, what it can do is make those folks safe that are already riding their bikes on Bennington Street, whether it's five or 10 a day, we can, we can make them a great deal safer with this pretty minor intervention.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, I'm just going to make some comments and I, I want to first thank you for the presentation and, you know, you know, like my colleagues and the Ward Counselor, I, I have some reservations about it, okay? And I guess my major concern is, it, it seems as though the, the, the reasoning behind
the reasoning behind it is, is questionable, and, um, I'm trying to understand what's broken, okay, that it needs to get fixed, um, because like, uh, Counsel McKenna said, there's a pretty wide sidewalk, uh, on both sides, uh, of the, uh, of, uh, that stretch. Why take a lane out when you can make a bike lane probably in that sidewalk, and if you're gonna clean it up, then why not start with the sidewalks in that area rather than taking a, a, a bike lane, I, I mean, uh, two lanes out of that stretch? And I, I just don't understand the, the, what's broken, and, and why should any of our residents have to wait, whether it's five, ten, fifteen, twenty seconds, uh, longer than they have to, for what? I, and, and tha- that's just the biggest question, I mean, I think a bike lane can still be created on that sidewalk and still have a sidewalk for, for walking people, uh, for people to walk on and keep the two lanes, it just seems it's like you wanna create the traffic in order to slow people down on that stretch, and, you know, uh, having that monitored by whether it's state police or, uh, our, uh, police departments is something that, um, should, shouldn't be, uh, considered, you know, because, uh, rather than making this big project, for what reason, I, I, I just can't understand and can't grasp the, the reasoning behind it, um, to make such a drastic change of, in our community where it's gonna affect, uh, that Beauchamp area, and for what? I, I just don't understand it, I'm sorry, and, uh, I, I, one other question, I, I know everybody says this seems to be at the beginning stages, I just heard of it, honestly, I think, um, at our Veterans Memorial meeting, um, uh, event, so it seems as though it's been going on for quite some time, and I know a lot of the councilors just got wind of this.
Yes.
Which is a little, uh, disappointing, you know, um, especially if, you know, uh, our city is gonna be impacted, so that being said, I'm a little disappointed not to know that, um, this was going on, um, and then, you know, to say that it's in the twenty-five percent stage, my concern is, once it goes to a, um, what, what is it, a, uh, a, um, a public hearing, no, eh, do we have to approve this in order for this to happen? 'Cause it seems as though it's moving in that direction, and I'm wondering if we are, the, our, us as a city council, uh, council, have any input on this, on whether or not it actually takes place?
Sure, so, um, I'm gonna try and answer those.
Go ahead.
So first of all, uh, to be, to be fully candid, um, part of the, part of the motivation is leveraging benefits for all of those roadway users, whether they're people crossing the street, driving along it, or already legally riding their bicycle there, uh, we're trying to leverage something that's easy to implement, and again, easy to, to remove, um, construction of a separated side path or widened sidewalk, that sidewalk is not particularly bikable, it's not, and it's not even, it does not meet accessibility standards, in order to do that, that level of intervention, we would be talking about millions of dollars, millions of dollars in an area where H Y M has proposed BURMs, where Climate Ready Boston has proposed some other flood control type intervention, what, what we're potentially doing is leveraging a different use for this corridor that has a very light touch, I mean, the level of capital that we would be investing to essentially test, pilot out, experiment with this corridor unlocks a great deal of potential benefits for this community and all of the others that are about it.
I, okay, and, and that's what I question, okay?
I, I hear that, I'm hearing that from all of the councilors.
You're saying it's a pilot program, my concern is these pilot programs become permanent, okay, and that's the biggest problem we have as a council is, is like, that bike, uh, that bus lane on Broadway, yes, that was a, a, a pilot problem, it be, also became permanent, okay, it's not something that, you know, um, if I would probably poll the s- city council, I'm not sure if they would be in favor of that right now, um, so our concern is the fact that, you know, these pilot programs all of a sudden become permanent, and we had no say in that, and that's, that's a major problem with us, so, um, that's a, and, and maybe so, maybe now you, you're telling me it's, it's one of, uh, it, it's a, a way, um, it's a cost, the most cost-effective way in order to make the changes, rather than adjust the sidewalks, is, eh, what you're telling me is, it has, it has a, 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 a dollar value to it as well.
Please don't mis- misread me, uh.
No.
It's, it's about, it's about trying to leverage an outcome that, that is tiered, so, uh, for example, right, let, let me dive into the detail here, so, uh, H Y M proposed a BURM along this stretch of Bennington Street, and their consultant just drew a, a thick line on a map and said, "Burm." What that actually looks like, no one, no one actually knows, is it permitable? And this is about protecting the, the residents and, and public and private properties in Beauchamp, part of the reason it was, was proposed was for, for that community flood mitigation type purpose, and, um, one of my other hats at Mastod is overseeing the development of our new climate resiliency program, and we've looked at this project and said to ourselves, interesting, but you can't permit it, there's impacts to salt marsh, there's impacts to Article ninety-seven land, uh, that, that DCR owns, and by the way, you've got this really, really large roadway corridor that could be leveraged for different purposes. Now, in order to do that, to bu- to design this long-term, multi-tens-of-million-dollar intervention, we would have the same questions here from, 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 from either, you know, the, the US City Councilors or other members of the community saying, but, what about the, this traffic? And we would be potentially trying to invest tens of millions of dollars, right? Now, I'm not suggesting we're gonna do that, but I'm just offering that as an example of the kinds of major capital projects that take a long, long time to do, and we invest a lot of time and energy in, and when we can invest in a more tiered way, reap out the benefits for folks, if we get it wrong, we can undo it.
Okay, alright.
Yep, and then, eh, you had two other questions, and I'm trying to.
I, I, I don't re-
Okay, alright, um, alright, I, I'll stop there too.
That's okay.
Alright, outside, I should've been taking.
I guess, uh, no worries, uh, thank you, uh, uh, if there are any other, if there's no further questions.
Mr. President, could, could you just answer how much of a say the city council would have?
Oh, right, thank you very much, um, so technically, uh, Mastod has jurisdiction over the stretch of, of Bennington, so, you know, uh, by a technicality, no, we do not need a, a motion of approval from the city council, uh, that's not something that is typical with us, uh, but I would say we are public servants, and we are beholden to process, um, I'm here tonight to explain the project to, to this body, um, you know, we are, we're in partnership with, with staff from the city, and frankly, you're right, this didn't start yesterday, we're in a preliminary design phase, but we've been conceiving this for some time, working in partnership with the city of Revere, Boston, DCR, H Y M, right? Um, that, we were taking directive from all of those partners, what's the best level of engagement here, and trying to understand, you know, where, where is there gonna be sensitivity, we got that wrong, so I, I'll, I'll just acknowledge that and apologize to this group, that we weren't here much, much sooner, uh, we're trying to make up for that now, um, and, and we certainly are, are, are open to more feedback on, on additional public process, community workshops, all of that sort of thing that are the hallmark of better engagement, um, in terms of process, I think that, you know, uh, formalizing the, the position, whether you guys do that by vote or, or by, you know, sort of, whatever that mechanism, formal mechanism by the council is, um, that is very well within the purview, and it is up to my leadership, not me, uh, to, to deliberate on that internally and, and either, you know, make a decision to say, well, there's a lot of concerns here and engage further, and continue that dialogue, um, but once, you know, once that, that's put formally in writing, or, or whatever it may be, um, those, those sort of, the, the raising of the flag up the pole, if you will, i- i- is initiated.
Well, uh, I, I, I hope that, um, the, the dialogue continues with us, uh, before any decisions, uh, are finalized, and keeping us in the loop and hoping to see you again, um, at the next stage, um, and hope that your, the leadership, uh, at the, the DOT take, takes our input, um, seriously, that's all, and, uh.
I'm sure they will, and, and you know, I, I think, um, you know, uh, your, your state representatives have taken this very seriously, we are, you know, we are getting into shape, and again, offer our apologies for any, you know, uh, real or perceived, I think there's probably a little bit of both there, uh, lack of, um, transparency on our part, just in terms of coming typically a little later in our process, but, uh, we'll try and make up for that and, and engage, uh, as appropriate moving forward.
Thank you again, we're gonna place this on file.
Alright, than- thank you all, alright.
Late motion presented by Counselor Serino, that the following amendment be ordered to a public hearing, an ordinance further amending an ordinance relative to meeting times of governmental bodies.
Um, Counsel Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President, very simply put, this is a housekeeping, uh, motion and a housekeeping way of amending the meeting times ordinance that we passed a couple of years ago, since we passed that in twenty-twenty, two additional public bodies, uh, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and the Public Arts Commission have been formed, and they are not within the meeting times ordinance, and there was some question if they could hold meetings before five P M, uh, obviously that is, you know, that goes against the spirit of the meeting times ordinance that we passed, so this clarification that will go to a public hearing is to clarify that the only exempt public bodies would be, uh, the school committee, the license commission, and I believe that's the, I'm sorry, and the council on elder affairs, which are the senior citizens, um, aside from that, every other public meeting body would have to meet at five P M or later, uh, so again, just a housekeeping item.
Great, and this is gonna be ordered, thank you, Counsel, this is gonna be ordered to a public hearing on January twenty-third, and before we adjourn, we have a moment of personal privilege from, um, Counsel Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, on behalf of myself and Counsel Sylvester, who's not here with us today, um, a few days ago, we lost the resident of Revere, Jamie Mantia, and I, guys, excuse me, thank you, as I was saying, a few days ago, we lost the resident of Revere, his name is Jamie Mantia, he's very, uh, a very good friend of mine, I just wanna say that every time that I spent time with him, uh, it was just full of laughter, um, he was very close with his family, his family loved him very much, and, uh, again, on behalf of myself and Counsel Sylvester, if you would all join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Counsel Novoselfski.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. President, I know I've been very quiet tonight, um, but I, uh, this week is, uh, the week of Hanukkah, the festival of lights, and I wanna wish all my Jewish friends, uh, happy Hanukkah, tonight is the second night, and tomorrow at City Hall at four o'clock, we will be lighting the third night in public, and, uh, our singing seniors will be there, uh, helping us to celebrate with, uh, several rabbis from other communities in Revere, so, hope to see everybody there at four o'clock tomorrow, thank you.
Thank you, and, uh, this is gonna conclude our, uh, meeting, and, uh, on behalf of the city council, where this is the last meeting of the year, I wanna wish everyone, uh, a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, and a Happy New Year, thank you.
Meeting adjourned.